If I see a question that maybe is not appropriate, I'm going to move to the next question. So we're trying, like she said, not to get personal. I'm not sure of what's going on, so some of the questions might be that I asked that I didn't realize that was a source. We'll get through it if we can. As far as the, then after that, if there's no time, my understanding, we're going to open it up to the people sitting out in the audience. So with that said, y'all know it, these people, I'm the guy you probably know. And again, love to meet you, but I like pointer is sitting to my left. And Mike DeHaven and then Mark Cunningham. Okay, the other candidates, I'm understanding, are not going to be here. They wrote their names down, so I'll read them for, to be fair. Tammy Harvey, Luke Bratusich, and, okay. See, I knew I was going to make that mistake. My first jury trial was in Austin County. It was German people and Czech people, and they have no ballot in their name. As soon as I butchered everybody's name, they said, "You're not around here, are you, boy?" So I apologize to Luke. And Danny Limbly. So with that said, I guess we'll just go ahead and start pulling names. Okay, any other questions? I was hoping the print wouldn't respond. Okay. Danny is not good. Okay, first question. What, let's go without it. And we're just going to mix it up, go back and forth, I think that's probably the fairest way to do it. Alec, what criteria and process should be used to choose or ban curricular materials? How do you think those needs should be addressed?
Right at the back, love it.
So what you're telling me is that's a hot button issue, I should be like, okay, I apologize if that's the case.
So I guess I got the easy one. So when you start thinking about curricula, you know, the state, we're very lucky in Texas. The state gives us some oversight, but a lot of broad thoughts and abilities to adopt different curriculum. So when we're starting to talk about that, I would like to make sure that teachers and parents, you know, are definitely involved in decisions there. But let's face it, we've got awesome teachers and they are the subject matter experts. So they should have as much involvement as possible. And then, you know, we should make a decision that reflects our community. You know, and, you know, there were some questions on Facebook a couple of days ago that talked about some national curricula issues, like the 1619 project and things of that nature. And, you know, I don't think any one of the, any of the six people running would be good with any of those super liberal national curricula programs. And I wrote quite a bit about those. So, you know, I would, I would want to make sure that, you know, parents are involved, subject matter experts, teachers involved, hear from the public, and then, and then make decisions that way.
Okay, Mike, your question. What difference, what makes you different from your opponents?
So let me, I think maybe if I start out saying, why I'm running for school board might answer that question. So I have like a very unique knowledge and understandings of tax-based organizations. I've dedicated my service, or my life to public service, both in my career and in my spare time. And so I wanted to offer that as a choice to the voters to have that on the school board. And that unique knowledge is I run tax-based organizations for the city of College Station, you know, and I have education in that. And normally in school boards don't have the ability to have some type of knowledge like that on the school boards. A lot of times, school boards struggle to get people to run, and it's amazing that we have so many of us willing to take on that position. And so, and really, my differentiation, we all care about the kids, we all want the greatest education we can get. I have a little different background than everybody, than people that are running, each one of us do, and that's the strength that I'm running on.
Okay, Mark, as a school board member, from whom will you seek advice or input in weighing key decisions?
Well, basically, I'm a team player, so I would seek advice from the community, the students, the teachers. I've always felt like if we listen to the teachers, they're in the trenches, they're the ones who are, and I've been a teacher, because I've got, I've been in for 40 years. So I think it's really important that we listen to the, we go out to the community, we listen to them, we listen to the students, the teachers, to where we can help them out and give them resources to be more successful in the classroom.
Thank you. Okay, Alec, how has your experience in your profession prepared you to serve on this board?
For those of you that don't know, I work at Texas A&amp;M University in the utilities department. I am in charge of budgeting and invoicing all of the utilities that are used on the College Station campus, the Relus campus, and about 10 other campuses around the state to about, the tune of about $90 million a year. So we budget about a year and a half in advance. So when we finish a fiscal year and we look back and compare that to what we actually budgeted to what we estimated a year and a half before, I'm typically within one, one and a quarter percentage points. I'm very proud of that. I tell people, God didn't give me much, but he gave me a mind for numbers. And, you know, that's very important in a district like ours. When you're talking about a small district with a budget of give or take $6 million, in order to do all the things that we want to do for the kids, we have to make every dollar count. And we have to make sure that, but when those dollars count, you're getting the value as taxpayers, because every dollar that the school district spends is a dollar you cannot. So we have to make sure that we, we find that really fine balance between the value for you, the value for the kids that we want to give, and my background in numbers and finances make me a little unique there.
Thank you. Okay, Mike, this is a long one, so bear with me. Being chosen as a board member sometimes requires questioning or challenging things that are or are not happening in the district overall or in some of the schools. Do you feel that this statement represents what a board member's duties are? Why or why not?
Okay, so, you know, let's go back. Per TEA, there's actually certain things that school board members are supposed to do. They adopt the budget, they set the tax rate, they set the local policy for the district, and they are the administrator for the superintendent. Those are really the only things a school board member can do. Now, setting that local policy could have something to do with what we might not be doing or doing at the school district curriculum-wise, activities-wise, you know, any of those items. So yes, in an extent, you can influence what's going on at different campuses, but it's all through policy only.
Okay. Mark, what are some of the strengths and weaknesses you see in our district?
Well, being here as a teacher coach, our athletic program is probably one of our key strengths. And also, the community coming out and involving themselves, helping them out, following the teams and all that. Some of the weaknesses I see, you know, there's, there's a lot of strengths in this district. I mean, the community, the students, the teachers, and they do an outstanding job. But one of the weaknesses that I've seen, and I've just gotten, is the CTE program. I feel like we should reach out more to the CTE, because it gives an opportunity for kids who are not, not all the kids are going to go on an athletic scholarship, not all kids are going to go on an academic scholarship. But I think the trade school, you know, they're built, they've got, they built one over in College Station, Bryan, I'm sorry. And also, I think we should use our resources at Texas A&amp;M, also at Lynn. So I think we can up our CTE program, because, you know, for the trade and all that. Here's what's going on. Over there in Bryan's, Bryan College Station, actually Bryan, okay? There's some small schools, and you say, well, that's a big school. Well, the small schools have been invited to that CTE program. They've asked Caldwell, they've asked Snook, they've asked Hearn, they've got even Richards, even Richards is going over there. So I think we should take that opportunity to be one of those schools. We're a small school, but I think it would benefit our kids, because there's a lot of talent in that, you know, you could go into a lot of, you know, Vocac, you can go, there's other places where you can, plumbing, there's a lot of things out there for vocational. And these companies, if they would, these kids coming out of high school, if they have a trade, they could end up making 50, $60,000 coming out of, out of high school, which I think it's a great opportunity for our kids in Iowa to take advantage of that.
Thank you. Alec, would you support term limits for school board members? If so, why?
I keep getting the fun ones. I've never really ever thought about term limits for, for a school board until today. So, you know, off the top of my head, I, I support the idea of term limits, you know, for pretty much any elected official. I mean, I would say no elected official should really, you know, make a habit of being, you know, elected forever. I mean, one of the things that I believe is, when you're elected, you probably, your mindset probably sticks, you know, where, where it was when you were elected. You know, there are, and that's human nature, right? I mean, when you get in something, it worked for you, so you keep doing it. And, you know, there's always, there's always room for, for, you know, new thought, new blood. So, you know, overall, I would say, yes, I support.
Thank you. Okay, Mike, according to TEA website, Iowa had a 38.9% of our students who met the necessary criteria on the SAT or ACT test to get into college. What do you propose as a prospective school board member to increase these scores to better prepare our students for college?
Well, first off, we all know we have amazing teachers at Iowa. And, you know, and that number, can you read it, was it 38? Oh, sorry, okay. Okay, 38.9. You know, that number, when you, when you hear that, it might sound, sound a little low, but, you know, we have, each, each student has a different ability, we all know that. And our teachers are amazing. I think what I would do is make sure that every one of our teachers had the resources they need to teach our kids to the fullest. You know, cutting back on, on resources, it really hurts the children's education. So I would say we'll just make sure all those teachers have what they need to teach their students and get those scores where, you know, we as a community feel they're, they should be at.
Thank you. I recently received information, this is one question from out there, from the incumbent board candidate, that Iowa ISD had a 93 in the District A to F academic accountability rating. This is something to be proud of. However, it is concerning that Iowa Elementary scored a level B, 83, and the year before scored a 77. What issues would you have, what would you do with these scores, or what would you do better?
Well, one of the things I've, I've been out in the community and I've been listening to some teachers, I think at our elementary, at our elementary level, I think if we would quit shuffling the, the teachers around, you know, like if you have a first kindergarten teacher moving to third grade, I think it hurts those teachers, because they, their morale starts to lower and that they, you know, anytime you're coaching something or teaching something, you want to feel confident in the area. And so when you, you've got a period of time when you're teaching these things, it allows those teachers, you know, to stay in their classroom and have their resources. So I think that's one of the things we need to stop doing. We need to have a consistency in the elementary where the teachers aren't reshuffling. I know this, when I was at A&amp;M Consolidated, we, our staff members never left there for four straight years, and we won over 90 ballgames in four years. Not one member of that staff left. And the consistency and the expectation from them kids, they understood, because it was all intact. So if we keep our, our teachers in the same subject area, we have a chance to really raise those scores and everything. And also, right down, right here in our community, Iowa volleyball team, they did tremendous, because they've got the same person teaching those kids. And that's, you know, they're the top program in the, I mean, when I go out other places and I say I'm from Iowa, they say, oh, your volleyball team's awesome. And they are, because you've got one person who's continuing to teach those kids consistency all the time. So I think we need to stay consistent in our elementary, keeping our teachers in the same area that they're very, very comfortable in.
Okay, Alec, do you believe that teachers should have a greater input, voice in district decisions that impact their work and their students? If so, what would you do to ensure that their input is heard and considered?
So first, I just want to say, I agree, the volleyball team is awesome. My daughter is on the volleyball team, so they're, I'm partial. Yes, I, I believe, again, I said it earlier, teachers are our subject matter experts. Okay, they are the experts in, in educating our children, not just overall, but specifically in what they teach. And, you know, anybody that is an expert, that has their hand in teaching our children should have a say. Now, that does not mean they are the ultimate say, it doesn't, you know, I'm not going to stand up here and say that, that a teacher, you know, is, is the only person that should have a say. Parents have to have a say in their, in the education of our kids, and you do that through participating, you know, in elections and, and in events and making sure your opinions are heard and speaking at members, board meetings. The board has a say, because they're setting the policies, the administration are having a say, because that's their job, you know, to oversee everything. But yes, the teachers should have a say, just like everybody in that group.
Okay, Mike, what specific steps would you take as a school board member to improve transparency and to make the school district information more widely available?
In public organizations, I believe, they're, they're called public for a reason, because they're for the community. The state of Texas, you know, mandates, rules, and regulations that, you know, we have to buy by at the city where I work, and also, you know, school districts and things like that. Just to have transparency, I think, one, we need to get more people involved in our school, and that's attending school board meetings, budget workshops. The more information people know, the more they know and, and are going to have input for everybody. You know, and I will say one thing, is, you know, we have budget workshops that occur during the morning times. I think we should have all of our public meetings at 6:30 at night, so everybody has the opportunity to attend. You know, more information on websites about when school board meetings are, less called meetings, we can have them on our standard timeframe, so everybody knows when to show up. And, you know, in my view, I think, I love Iowa, our small little town, everybody goes to the football games, we go to the volleyball games, why can't we all go to the school board meetings and support our school?
Thank you. Okay, Mark, could you give us two or three reasons that make you the candidate, candidate for the position?
Well, I'm an old 40-year veteran here, so I've got a lot of knowledge, and I've been in some number of different school districts, have seen a lot of things that work and don't work. I'm also a taxpayer. I've been a, about all, I'm probably the most round, most rounded person in here on the, on the, running for the school board here, and who's, who's on school board. You know, I've been a student, I mean, a parent, I've been a booster club, I've been a taxpayer, just, I'm just so well-rounded that I, I allow, and a lot of experience, and so I would do anything and everything to help this community get better.
Okay, Alec, this is from someone who's a retired special education person with dyslexia, and they're asking, I'm concerned about the K through 2 for second grade students receiving the tools they need to be successful readers. I'm concerned the students are not receiving a strong phonics and coding skills in the early grades. How would you address this concern?
I'm a big, big supporter of phonics. Both of my children went through early elementary in Iowa when, when phonics was just drilled into it. Danny, Paul of Mallett sent home so many phonics pages that I, I think I still have nightmares over some of the little dip thongs and all of the rest. So, I mean, phonics is really important. And, you know, to the point where there, there was a time when people were getting away from phonics, not just in Iowa, but across the state. And it kind of fell out of popularity, not too recently, or not too distant past. And scores started to come down for everybody. And, you know, to the point where the state in House Bill III put in requirements that districts have phonics programs. And, and they're very important, and I, I know that we have a phonics program. I'm no longer a elementary parent, so we don't go through that. But when I talk to elementary parents, it's not the same level as it was when my kids went through. Now, from a special ed standpoint, everybody that, that comes in and watches some of the board meetings and pays attention to the budget, knows that we are identifying a lot more students with special ed needs. And that's wonderful that we're identifying kids that were previously unidentified. They need the help. But there are still a lot of kids, and I know several, that have told me that their child took the, took the tests and, you know, were not diagnosed and had to go pay thousands of dollars to get a diagnosis for themselves and come back and work with the school. And that, you know, that's unfortunate. I'm not going to say that, that the school did anything wrong, because they're working within the system that they have. We just need to make sure that when we hear about those situations, we're reviewing the systems that we have as a school to see, is that a failure of the system? Is it a failure of what we're using as a screening? You know, how did we not do that? And try to make corrections. And it's just very important, because those babies are the most vulnerable, and if we don't help them immediately when, when they start having trouble, they're going to start hating school, and they're going to turn into the kids in middle school that hate school, and they're going to turn into the kids in high school that hate school. And, you know, they're, they're just too precious for that to happen. You know, and we, we need to make sure that we are doing everything we can to identify them. I know that was really long.
Okay, do you have any specific changes that you would like to see made in the school?
Very wide. So, you know, and I'm going to talk kind of two, two, two levels here. So at a board level, I think, you know, one thing I want is transparency, I want parent involvement, I want us to have a lot of strategic direction. And I'm going to tell you, the Bay, Texas Bay and End legislation we had two years ago funded our schools more than they had in a long time, which was awesome. It was great, it helped our district out immensely. COVID took a big hit out of that, and we actually, to do that to, in those Bay and Ends, they had to draw the rainy day fund quite a bit, and then now there's a floor in there that can't go below. Districts are going to face some challenges going forward. And I think having some, you know, some proper strategic direction, some long-term budgeting, because if you look at that tax cap, we have a two and a half percent on our ad-alarm taxes, and people's raises on average are going to be 3% on these steps. If you do that math, it doesn't map, it doesn't add up. It looks like you're in a deficit every year, which is, which is not, because property taxes are only a portion of your, your funding. But we're really going to have to look forward in how we want to fund the programs in our district. And then, other things I'd like to change, and I know we talked about the CTE programs that Cunningham talked about, one of the things, I know when my kids were here, a few, few years ago, 10 years ago, I'm sorry to show my age, the elective programs we have in the, in the school, some of them are difficult, because we just have small classes, we only have 35 kids in our classes. It's difficult to have a robust program. But if we were to maybe consolidate and offer some ones that are relevant in today's society. Basic computer programming skills are needed by almost every kid when they get out of school and into college, just understanding the details of Microsoft Excel, because I know when my kids went to, to Texas A&amp;M, they had, in a lot of their science and math classes, they had to use Excel, and they came to me, because I use it daily, trying to get some help. These are some small steps, doesn't really cost us much, we just kind of shift focus, that we can apply to our kids and actually kind of help them out.
Okay, Mark, is there a program or extracurricular activity that you feel Iowa ISD would benefit from, and what would you do to try to get that program introduced at the Iowa ISD? I think you kind of already answered that question last time, but is there another program?
As you know, I'm real big in the CTE, I've really seen some things, other schools who've really benefited for it. So that would be one thing I would really pump some extra money into, because there's so many opportunities for kids out there that are looking for things like that. So I'm just a big believer in it. I've seen different schools, what they're doing with those kids, and those trade schools, and what those, those opportunities for those kids to make that money and help their families and things like that. It just, it just blows me away what some of these other schools are really doing. And I think we have, we'd have an opportunity to do it here. We've got great kids, I mean, wow, I've never regretted not coming to this school and being a coach. I mean, I really think the best kids are right here in Iowa, Texas. I still think it's the best kept secret in, in the state of Texas.
Okay, on this last question, I pulled it out, saved it for last, because the person that asked the question wanted all three to answer this individually, so. It goes, "In the past few years," I'll let you go further, normal way, and we'll just go through the line, "in the past few years, our school budget has been off by 10 to 20% either over or under budget. Some would say if we are under budget by almost 20%, then our taxes should be lowered or resources to the students and teachers should be increased. What are your feelings on this, and are there ways to improve the budget swings to be more accurate in our school budget on projections?"
All right. From a budgeting standpoint, the thing that we need to do better that will, that will assist with that is we need to budget our income better. Okay? So by that, I mean, we need to know upfront how much money we're getting from the state and what we're going to do with it. That's a real simple explanation, but let me give you an example. The state pays us on average daily attendance. Last year, we ended the year with an average daily attendance of 503. This year, we started the first day of school with 535, but because of a lot of reasons, we, we ended with about 496 on the six weeks. We're bringing all the kids back to, to in-person learning, so that 496 is going to, we're going to shake out somewhere around 515. Our budget that we passed last year assumed 480. Okay? We get six, between $6,000 and $7,000 per kid. Okay? So if we budgeted 480 and we get 515, that's a couple hundred thousand dollars that we're going to get at the end of the year that we didn't do any planning with. Okay? So the budget that we passed this year with 480 has a $5,000 overage, so we say we're collecting $5,000 more than we spent. When you have $5,000 and that's all that's left, you can't do anything with it. You can't hire another teacher for a CTE class, you can't fix some of the problems that we have in the physical plant at the school, you can't, you know, lower your taxes, you can't do any of it. It just, you get the money at the end of the year and it goes into fund balance. Nobody wants to touch fund balance, right? So if we're not budgeting that money upfront and knowing what our income is going to be, we're not going to be able to make any of the changes that anybody, us or the incumbents say that they want to make. Okay? Because there's just never money for it. So if we, the school does a fairly good job of keeping our expenses tight, we're a small district, you know, but you're, there's not going to be- But there's not going to be a lot of cutting there, you know? But that income is where we have to be able to get a good handle on so that we're not getting a check for $400,000 or $500,000 or, in the past, $700,000. That number, 700,000, that really happened on a budget of $6 million. You know, that's a big percentage, you know? And it's great that we got it, and it went into our fund balance, and our fund balance needed to be put back up to where it was. But the board should be the one making that decision in the budget process. They're who's responsible to all of us. Okay?
Do you want me to repeat the question? Or are you good?
No. Go ahead and repeat.
I'll repeat. "In the past few years, our school budget has been off by 10 to 20 percent, either over or, I'm sorry, either over or under budget. Some would say if we are under budget by almost 20 percent, then our taxes should be lowered or resources to the students and teachers should be increased. What are your feelings on this? And are there ways to improve the budget swings to be more accurate in our school budget on projections?"
Okay. So, basically, budgeting and actuals, that's my job at the city call station. And it's always said that a budget is always inherently wrong. It's an excellent, that's all it is. You know, you really compare your budget to actuals, and that's kind of, you know, we all want to get as close as possible that we can. Sometimes you can't, and sometimes you can. And I know, you know, when we had some fund balance issues, there were just some miscalculations. And so, when you look at the actuals, I think we drew down our fund balance one year by $600 and some thousand dollars. Next year, we realized it and we built $100,000. The year after that was $700,000. We're coming into a year, it'll be $300,000 to $500,000, making that number up. It's going to be somewhere north of a couple hundred thousand. Like Alec was saying, the importance of budgeting is you've got to utilize those funds. These are taxpayers' dollars, and the board is 100% accountable for that taxpayer dollar. None of us want to pay taxes today. I mean, I'll tell everybody that. I don't like paying taxes. But it's something we do in our society, United States of America, to fund at federal, state, and local levels. Local governments are the only ones that have property taxes, and that's why the state lumps government, or, I'm sorry, counties, municipalities, and school districts together, the only ones that blow on property taxes. So, we need to make sure that we budget them accurately so we can utilize them and show the accountability for those funds.
You want me to repeat it one more time, Mark?
I'm not going to sit up here and try to beat these guys, okay? I was hoping he would have that first question. That question should have come to me first, because I'm going to defer to these two guys right here, because they run the million-dollar budgets. I've run budgets before, but it's in a small area and all that, so I would, hopefully, I would defer to them on the budget things.
Okay. That concludes the, you know, the question and answer from the anonymous bowl there. So, we're going to now turn it over to people that actually have questions from the audience. Does anybody, I guess, do we have another microphone or is this the only one? Okay. Y'all want to come up here if somebody has a question? Or just stand up and holler it out and I can repeat it? Okay.
My question is this. It really should perhaps be addressed to an administrator, but there's no one here, so I don't know. But is the district policies and procedures available to the public online?
So, the question was if the policies and procedures of the district were available online. And yes, there are, I would say the vast majority of them are online. If you go to iolaisd.net, there is a school board section. And under there, I believe that it, there's policies and there's agendas, there's minutes, there's the information that will be presented at meetings. So, a lot of that is on there. And the meetings, the meetings are filmed and available online. They're not filmed by the district, you know, they're filmed by others, but it's the Iola Barker, what is, is that the address? Just .com, .net?
Right.
Okay, .com.
Does the policies and procedures address the acceptability of a school employee becoming a board member?
So, I do believe that the school employees cannot become school board members, and I do believe that's a TDA rule. And so, that's why you either have to resign from the school, if you want to be on the school board, to take that position. Okay? Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I do research, sometimes just for fun. Anyway, I googled you and discovered you had been at Goliad, China Springs, Pittsburgh, Grand Prairie, Alvarado, White Settlement. Did I say Glen Rose? And you already said Consolidated, so we already know that. I would like your explanation as to why you left Goliad and China Springs and White Settlement, please.
Well, I left, which one did you ask first? Because I've been, my number stops. I left majority of those programs. Either it was for a better job or that basically I felt like there was a different understanding going on, that they didn't quite believe in the program we were trying to put in. So, I, so I'm always looking for a place that we can do better. And my program, just like I was saying, I like to put my programs in, I like to hire my people. So, sometimes if I'm not allowed to do that, then I choose another school that will allow me to use my resources to be successful.
Any other questions?
I've got a question.
Okay.
I don't know if it's a question or a statement, but I'll come up there. I'm Mark England, and I have three sons that have come through. One that graduated from Iowa, two that are in Iowa right now. With the budgeting and everything, me being a former trainer, you know, one of my sons got hurt last year, and my son had to sit out for just three games recently. And then, before I came over here, I got a letter in the mail saying that the insurance, the medical insurance that is provided through the school was denied for the claim when my son got hurt in the game. I don't know what your responsibility as a candidate, how you would handle that, because there seems to be a passing of the buck of when you come to deal with the situation where a kid gets hurt, school trying to get the situation resolved, widows and all that, even though we have to cross the shield. There's still, some of these parents aren't as forced, so how do you handle that? That's the first question.
Do you want to be each candidate?
Well, that's all.
Okay. I look forward to the second question.
When we talk about issues like insurance, you know, I, from a board member's perspective, you know, or from just a neighbor's perspective, that's unfortunate, you know, and it shouldn't happen. You know, the, from the board's perspective, they adopt a recommendation from the school administration saying, this is the insurance company that we should use. And then, my belief is that the school should not be involved in, you know, the claims after that. Now, you know, I don't know what the school can do. You know, I work in utilities and I certainly don't work in insurance. I hate insurance. You know, last two weeks, two MRIs in my family, so insurance sucks. But I really don't know beyond that, Mark, you know, what a board member would be able to do. You know, other than, you know, refer you to the administration, and the administration should be able to look into it further, and especially if it was an injury that happened in a game. I mean, I think everybody could agree that something like that should be covered by insurance. And on that, you know, we all talk about insurance claims, and it's like they never want to cover anything. But we do, the district does choose a insurance policy provider, and the, and Alec is right, once that point passes, it's like they have insurance to cover injuries that occur either on athletic or the school grounds, and then they rely on them to handle claims. But I think what would, as a school board member stepping back, if I hear of, you know, instances where we have more people running into problems getting claims paid, because we are paying a premium for that, we expect a service for something that occurs, then what we'd want to do then is really address or readdress who we have as our insurance carrier and maybe bring those issues up with them to see what's going on and if we need to provide or select another provider.
As being a former athletic director, head football coach, I know that it's the head coach or the AD's responsibility to make sure that the parents are aware of what percentage of the insurance covers that person. So, you should have a staff or a meeting with the parents and make sure they, or sit it with a mentor, also have a meeting and make sure they know what the percentage of the breakdown is, it's going to cover for the injury and also for your own insurance.
My second question. My son, Andrew, graduated from Iowa. He was involved in dual credit. He received 12 college hours at Iowa. But when he went to DBU, went through his whole freshman year, and he went to bootcamp in May, and when we were trying to get him squared away from bootcamp, his Iowa hours that he got for dual credit hadn't been counted, accredited to Blinn because they weren't certified. How would you handle that when your son graduates? How do you handle it?
So, hold on there, Mark. I want to just ask one part of it. When you say they weren't certified...
They weren't certified still the year after he graduated from Iowa.
And was that certification because you found out about it and said something? Or it was just it took that long to happen?
You let us know that he never received credit for those hours because the counselor at Iowa never certified any of the received college dual credit at Iowa.
All right. So, in that situation, that's a problem, you know? Parents pay for those dual credit hours. My daughter is taking two classes this year, one each semester. And Iowa actually has a great dual credit program. It's, there's room for improvement, right? You can start taking dual credit as a sophomore in Iola. Now, we, they're all online classes unless we have enough kids to justify a real professor. But those credits should be certified as the course finishes, or at least at the end of the year. Now, as the board, the individual teachers and the individual administrators below the superintendent don't officially report to the board. They report to a principal, and then that principal reports to the superintendent, the superintendent reports to the board. Now, I'm not saying that the board doesn't have anything to say over anything, right? And in situations like that, if that were brought to the board, you know, you can imagine that, and I can attest that, you know, I would follow up and make sure that that never happened again, you know? Because no parent who thinks that they've got something squared away for college for their kids, which is already a stressful time, you know, how are you going to pay for it? How am I going to get my kids up there? You know, they've never lived on their own. You know, that is not something we should drop in their lap, you know? And remember, the parents are paying for this. You know, I'm paying $600 a semester for a class. It's a lot cheaper than going to Blinn, but it's still a lot of money, you know? And if I'm not getting the bang for that buck, I don't understand why anybody would do it. You know, those kids should be in another class if we're not going to get it. So, that should not have happened. And I'm glad that it got fixed, and, you know, it's something that the school board, you know, should probably follow up with and make sure it does not happen again. Well, one, I'm proud of Andrew. He went to bootcamp, same place I did, so, you know, he's a great kid. And with that, and we kind of have to take the step and say where responsibilities are, you know, once, and I agree, I think if we hear, and that's one thing about the school board, I think it's great for the community to come and tell the school board things and communicate with them, because they might not know things that are going on. And like Alec said, stuff below the superintendent is not the school board's responsibility. And, you know, they don't have the authority. They can set policy, but it's, and they can ask about questions and ask people to, you know, maybe focus in these areas. Once kids do earn dual credit, both my daughters did the same thing, 12 hours, and we had more than that coming out. You know, the certification process also kicks into the transcripts at Blinn. So, the one thing, maybe we need to have a check is that these kids make sure that they go, once they graduate, within a few weeks, they should be able to pull their transcript from Blinn and show exactly which one of those classes. Now, that's a responsibility on them, but I think that could be a checklist also with our processes with our dual credit kids, because we know 17 and 18-year-old kids think with a hole in their head and sometimes just don't do stuff. That was my suggestion.
Most of what these two said is correct. The only thing I would maybe suggest to you, one more thing, is to go through chain of command, go to the counselor, and then from there, if you're not happy, go to the superintendent or the principal. I would follow the chain of command, and then if you're not happy, then bring it up to the board to just let them realize that there was a mistake there.
Okay. Any other question? Yes, ma'am.
I've got one question to y'all in kind of three holes. Do you feel like there's a divide in the community? What is the policy that a divide? And what would you, as a school board member, do to alleviate that?
Say it plain.
I'll repeat it.
Oh, thank you.
Don't worry.
Thank you, Alec.
So, she said, "Do we feel that there's a divide in the community? What's causing the divide? And what would we, as a board member, do to alleviate it?" So, believe it or not, until I started running for the school board, I would have answered that question as no. When I started running for the school board, I realized the answer to that question is yes. There is a divide in the community. There's a divide in every community, okay? But there is a divide, and that hurts my heart. And I've told people that about four or five times this week. And that's really, really, really unfortunate. And that, that's really, really, really unfortunate. And the cause is, um, people not communicating, okay? So, be heard. But a lot of times, people don't realize that the way you're heard is you listen. And when people stop listening to their friends and their neighbors and making, you know, comments that are public on Facebook against each other, it causes friction. And everybody has the right to disagree. Uh, and, you know, honestly, if, if you don't want to vote for me, don't vote for me. If you want to vote for me, vote for me. I'm not going to dislike you either way. And standing up and saying that, you know, "I would much rather lose the race, uh, to a, to a group of people that have done their homework and just disagree with me," rather than because they like one person more than the other, I, I'd rather lose the race, okay? So, there is a divide. Lack of communication is, is causing it. And, and what I'll say is, when I think something and I disagree with somebody, I tell them. I tell them with respect. Sometimes I tell them forcefully. Uh, but I can have and will work with any person on anything as long as it's benefiting the community. Uh, and, you know, that, that is, that is the issue that we're having. We have forgot that we're friends and neighbors. And we just have to remember that and talk to each other.
And I'll kind of expand on it. I mean, you covered a lot of it, but, um, you know, anything, anytime change comes up, it causes friction. It really does. Every one of us running have, and when I say have a knowledge or skill, mine's obviously finance. Everybody knows that. I'm an accountant. Um, like, I had one gift and that was numbers. I can't write to save my life or anything like that. Ask my grad school professors. Um, but we're all running to give the community an option. Everybody has a voice and, and everybody knows I am the most ardent patriot there is in the world in civics. I believe civics has fallen out and especially in schools and in our society today. We all have duties, civic duties as a, as a citizen. We have rights and responsibilities. And part of those is listening, educating yourself on, um, on candidates. Voting, everybody needs to vote. And if I say that, I'll say it a thousand times, please vote. You don't have to vote for me, you've got to vote. Everybody needs to vote because we all have a voice. And on that, we all have a voice. It's our own voice, and so we really need to respect everybody else's voice. Because what's important to me might not be important to Kelly. What's important to, you know, anybody else might not be important to the other ones. But just understand and respect everybody. And I, and I think we've, some people might have forgotten that we're friends and neighbors, and we are. We all love each other. We're all friends. Every one of us that's running for the school board are friends. We had great conversation at King Evans, we had the forum, we're all laughing and everything with each other. And I think people in the community might not see that. And then they think there's a massive divide because of change or points of view. Everybody's got a point of view. It's okay to have a point of view because it's what's important to you. That's your point of view. Um, so what would I do to change it? I think from a school board level, if I was elected and the next school board, um, election came around, I would be telling our community, "It's awesome that we have so many people wanting to run for school board. It's awesome that we have people in our community that have strengths that just could make our district even better." Um, like I said, the one reason why I run is because I think a strong community utilizes the strengths of the people in it to make their organizations better. I volunteer as a accountant for many of the nonprofits here because I am an accountant and know how to do that stuff. And I give my free time for that because that's my strength. I wouldn't want to say.
Well, but basically, I'm like you. I, I don't like the dividing. I, I just feel like, I don't know if it's a division here. I think it's just, everybody's so competitive here in Iowa that when they, when they find somebody they like and they're, they're running for something, they, they're supporting them and they, and it's just a competitive deal. Uh, I, I'm a team player. I, I've always been, that's been in my coaching world there. But, uh, I would, the reason I'm running for board is that in all the opportunities when I was as a coach, there were so many good candidates. You know, I wanted to say, I wanted them to run, but as a teacher coach, I couldn't, you know, I couldn't do that. I couldn't. I'd say, you know, "You should throw your name in there." That's about all I could say. So when, when this came around and had several community people asking me to run, Iowa's been so good to me, I felt like I wanted to give something back to them. I, I think I owe that to them. Now, if I'm not chosen, I'm, I'm okay. I'm still going to be friends with everybody. You know, it's still a great place, and I'm still going to live at my, my, my place, and I'm still going to enjoy Iowa because it's a great community. So, but I'm running for, to give something back to Iowa. So, uh, hopefully after this election, it'll all come back together again, and I think it will.
Okay, we did get a question off of Facebook. I'll put this in there real quick. We had a similar question, I think it was, was addressed to you, but, uh, I'm going to have everybody readdress, or you might be readdressing it, but have everybody address this question. "What way would you investigate the curriculum programs we are using in order to improve our scores? And how would you ensure all teachers are using the state-adopted curriculums? Our district received a high score from TEA, however, our third grade scores are below where they have been in the past." Alright, so we, we did speak a little bit about, you know, what I think we should do to, how we should, uh, adopt curriculum. Uh, and, you know, I'll reiterate that. Everybody needs to have input. We choose from a, from a list of approved, uh, programs, and we, we figure out what's going to go best for our students. Every community has a different profile of students. It's unique to that community. Every community has a different, uh, feel and, and community, uh, set of beliefs, okay? So those programs need to match with that. They also need to match with what the state says is, is mandated, uh, for each grade level. If, but, if we go through that process, the parents have a, a say, the teachers have a say, the administration has a say, we pick it, everybody's happy, teachers have to use it, okay? And I think part of the question there was, was what would you do to make sure that teachers are, are teaching that? Was that?
Well, it says, "The district received a high score from TEA, number of third grade scores are below."
Right. So you, you make sure that all the teachers are teaching, uh, in a, in an aligned way where that has that, where that curriculum is building to the next school year, okay? And, and if we are doing that, and everybody is doing that, and our scores still are not where they need to be, you have to look at the program that we're teaching, okay? And you have to look at, are we all moving in the same direction? Is there somebody that, um, that is less enthusiastically teaching, uh, and putting materials from something else in there? Uh, is that the breakdown? Is the breakdown the program itself? Is the breakdown, you know, that we've been changing teachers around? You know, uh, because, you know, we, we have had a large number of teachers move around. Uh, I, I think that the turnover rate for our district is, is 25% the last couple of years. I want you to think about that. That's a lot. I know people that went to school with my kids, and my family's been here for generations, but I haven't. I've just been here 12 years. Uh, but my kids started in the district. We have kids in our class who had, who went to school and had a teacher in elementary school that taught their parents. I don't know that that's going to happen very often when you have 25% turnover every year, okay? And, and I know that when we came to Iowa, there were, there was a line for teachers to come to Iowa. When there was an open position, they were beating the doors down. They wanted to come from higher-paying districts here. Why? We have a great community. We have a great school. We have great kids. But i, i, if, if those things aren't all aligned, then high-stakes testing is high-stakes for kids. You're going to have kids throwing up the day before the test. But the way you take high stakes out of high-stakes testing is you just make it testing. They know the material so well that it's just a Friday test. And the way you do that is with great teachers that are consistent, their subject matters in first grade, second grade, third grade, not first grade one year, fifth grade the next year, kindergarten, you know, sixth grade. You know, and, and you make sure that all of the things that, that we pour into these children are consistent.
Um, I might have to have it later on, but, um, so investigating the curriculum, um, you know, I, I am an analytical person, and everybody knows there's black and white with me, um, and so I make informed, educated decisions. So as a school board trustee, if I'm going to investigate curriculum, I'm going to want to know, one, has it been proven? Um, what has the scores from other similar programs been like that's used it? How are ours comparing to that? And seeing, you know, and basically going to investigate where's the difference or why is there a difference between the two? Uh, it could be delivery, I mean, it could be that it just doesn't work here. Um, you know, and then the other thing is, I, I do believe in state-adopted curriculum because they have gone through the testing of it. They know that this stuff works. I don't want our kids to be, even though we, we are a district of innovation, which actually is very beneficial, um, when it comes to state-level curriculum, because we can choose some stuff and do something different, but I don't want our kids to be experiments, uh, because they lose time. Especially when you talk about, um, was it, basically kindergarten through second grade is when kids are learning to learn. Like, I was even at the Federal Reserve two, a couple of months ago, and the Federal Reserve, um, chairman said, because if somebody asked, "What would be the best thing we could do for our economy?", and he goes, "Improve the education for K through second grade." He goes, "You can make kids smarter, they're going to be smarter adults, they're going to make better decisions in our country." I was like, "Wow." I, I never even thought that would come from a Federal Reserve chairman. Um, now, on the, the scores, I agree, I, I have seen the reading scores come down. I, I'm not going to be expert. I don't know if there's been testing differences between the two, um, 2000-whatever till now. It has gone from the 90s to the 70s in the, um, third grade. I, I agree, we need consistency, we need programs that work, and we need to track them. We need to make sure that we look at kids as they progress from one grade to the next. If we only have testing in third grade and sixth grade, we've missed years in between that we don't know what we need to, to help or, or fix. And I'm not sure if that's a sixth grade testing year or not.
Just to, basically, I agree with both these candidates here. Also, I, I, like I said, consistency, I think is very important. But also, I would, I would do some research, and these two guys are stats, so they know what I'm talking about. I'd do some research through other schools and see what their curriculum, if it's the same curriculum we're using, why they're successful, and, and, and visit those places. And, and I know in the coaching world, when I've coached, I've stolen a lot of stuff from a lot of people. You know, that's been my, I, I'll steal it in a hurry if it works, you know? So I, I would, I would do that. I would, I would start looking at other programs, I mean, other schools that who's successful, and see what they're doing. If there's something a little bit better, or, or they're doing something a little bit different, that's what I'd, I'd do.
Okay, any other questions?
My name is Daniel Pedron. Uh, some of them, some of y'all might know me, some of y'all may not. My family's been here for 60, 70 years. We all know what's happening around the country nowadays, and what really bothers me right now is our education system. You know, our, America has gone rock down, load in education compared to other countries. And it's because the way that curriculum is being taught. And one of the things that bothers me the most, then, I have a grandson that went to Montgomery High School, which is senior year. And he asked me, and he asked his grandmother, "Can I come to Iowa? Because I graduated. All my kids graduated." And I told him, "Yes." And the reason I like Iowa is because there in Montgomery, they can wear long hair, they can have beards, they have mustaches. I don't like that in a school. But that's my opinion. Here, they run that course. No beards, no mustaches, no long hair. And I told him, "You have to cut all that off." So he agreed. But what bothers me the most is, do we have any kind of, uh, how do I say it? When you talk about curriculum, you see what's happening around the country, and you see a lot of these school teachers teaching this crap that's coming out, like BLM, all that stuff. And we have teachers that are right in Utah, America. Well, we, as parents and grandparents, do you don't monitor anything like that for as far as the teachers making sure they're not teaching any propaganda like that to our kids?
Boy, I really drew the short straw always on Twitter. Alright, um, I, I, I will say this, I, I, I am, I am not concerned sending my own children to Iowa. We, we, like you, my family's been here for generations. Uh, at, at the Trump parade, Mr. Pedron told, told me that he would drive up and down the road on Main Street with my dad when they were younger, so, yeah. And my family disperses for work and then comes home. And we came home earlier because we wanted our children to start and finish at Iowa. And I have no concerns about that. I know virtually every teacher in, in the district. We hire good people. We hire people, um, that I would let my children ride home with. We would hire, we hire people that, you know, go to church in our community and outside of our community. We hire good people. Uh, and we have a, a district that, that allows prayer. Uh, every year, there is, uh, there are people that walk the halls, pray before the, the school year for the kids, for, uh, the administrators, for, for the teachers. And, and you don't get that in the bigger districts, okay? Now, how do we monitor the teachers and make sure that they're not presenting things? You trust that you hire good people, and we trust, we have to trust that the superintendent has hired good, uh, uh, principals and they're hiring good teachers. And then you pay attention. Now, Laura did some questions on, on Facebook, and one, one of the questions that, that we talked about was some of these programs that were detrimental. And she said, "If you find out a teacher is teaching this, what, what's the problem? How do we solve that?" And my response was, "If we don't, uh, accept those programs as adopt, and we don't adopt them, a teacher should not teach them." But I'm not going to say that a teacher should never talk about something that I disagree with because I want my kids to learn how to disagree with something and be able to disagree with it without just saying because my mom and dad told me. I want them to know that there are forces in this world that they're going to be confronted with at college, or in life, or at work, that they have to know why it's bad for our country, okay? So if a teacher wants to have a conversation where they present both sides and the kids are able to see that something is negative and come to that conclusion and be able to draw out their own thoughts on it, I'm okay. There is a difference between an educator presenting material and indoctrinating with material. And that's what we have to guard against. And the way you guard against it is you keep Iowa, Iowa. And so I have not been here for generations.
And so I have not been here for generations. We moved here in 2011, and we came from one of the big school districts, I parent. And our kids in those districts, you, you, the community doesn't have as much involvement or choices or decisions on the education. When we moved out to the ranch out here, my girls came in and they said, hey dad, can we build a house and go to school? I'm like, well, we've never been past thirty-nine and one-ten, so we came into towns. And we went right to the high school, walked in, met Miss, and Miss knew Nicole played volleyball, and next thing they know, we're living in an RV out here, building a house. And the reason why we decided to do that and love this town is because Iowa is Iowa. It is a tight-knit community. We do, are able to do things you can't do in other big districts, and we wanna keep it that way. We wanna keep our school as unique as it is. Now, we do wanna grow it in programs and things like that, offerings for the kids. But like you said, I don't think we want our school district to look like the big school districts. Now, monitoring that, the school board selects the curriculum, and they're gonna do their best to investigate it and see what's best for the kids. If a teacher is going off and teaching curriculum that is unapproved, that's a breakdown in basically their authority that they were given to teach with. You know, as Alec mentioned, discussions, discussions are always gonna happen in classrooms or anything. The difference is teaching versus, like you said, indoctrination or just simple discussions. That was a tough one.
Mr. Patron, I think, I think what you'd see, the town's so conservative, that I think that teacher, you know, she's trying, if he or she was trying to teach something to the kids, and it got back to the, to the, to the community, I think it would be taken care of. Personally, I'm like you, I want conservative values, okay? That's how, that's how I've been raised. I don't even have Facebook. I, I stay off that. I'm just a, I'm just an old, old school guy who believes in the way I was raised and the conservative way. And so, that was some of the questions the other night we were presenting. Why would you want, if you had a family out there who wanted to come to Iowa, how could you persuade them to come? The five years I was coaching here, I never saw a fight. I mean, they, the kids would come up and say, maybe there was a fight, and I said, well, who hit them? Oh no, they were just, you almost hit him, you know, you almost hit him. So I would tell people when they, you need to come to Iowa, it's just a great place. I said, you know, the people take care of you. My daughter, it was the best move we ever made to come to Iowa. She had, she's benefited from so many things that the teachers and administration and all that has done for her. I mean, she was, she would have got into A and M had it not been for Iowa, had we not moved there. Because it's just awesome, it's just a good place.
Any more questions?
Hello, gentlemen. So my question is, I would like to say, for all you guys, thank y'all. You know, I think it's always special, they, you know, we got all these people out here. You guys, you guys, all the dear time, guys, appreciate you coming out. I think that's a good thing for you, we appreciate that.
Uh, my family's been here since late eighteen hundreds. I didn't get to go to school in Iowa. My great-grandfather, I think, used to come up and hang out at your school. Uh, we've been here a long time, I didn't get to come here, my parents couldn't make a living here, okay? So most of you guys may or may not know me. I'm in the oil and gas business, I get to travel all over the country, okay? I get to work in all sorts of small communities, okay? Part of my job in those small communities, from an oil and gas perspective, is to be a positive impact on that community. Everybody's seen movies, we're the devil, right? So I get to hang out with a lot of different types of folks, and I get to see a lot of different things, okay? One of the things specifically I would like to ask you guys, is that I think we're gonna have a challenge here.
Yes.
Most of our money in Texas comes from oil and gas, okay? I can tell you, from my revenue right now, we're down ninety-seven percent for this year. The budgets that I run, I run a couple of different budgets. Once in New Mexico, I used to do stuff on some frozen dollars. We went from doing, you know, somewhere around a billion and a half to probably about a hundred and ninety billion dollars. Which I know means that all of those funds that are generated, that go back into the state system to support us, they're not gonna be there. So one of the things in this community that I've seen is that any time somebody tries to cut something out of a budget, it becomes a huge problem, right? So with that coming down the pipeline, we all know that that's coming, so please be aware of that. Each one of you guys, if we had a twenty percent budget shortfall, specifically, what are you gonna cut and how are you gonna cut it, and how are you gonna deal with all of us?
Okay, first again, so, uh... Every dollar that the price of oil goes down and stays down, the state of Texas loses eighty-five million dollars in revenue. That puts it into perspective. We know that last year, or last biennium, House Bill Three was put in, and it increased funding. If oil doesn't rebound, and sales taxes don't rebound, there are going to be educational cuts. But they've already said it at the legislature, they start in January, call Ben Lamont. So, we know that having, having a group that can look at numbers and, and do the budgets and try to figure it out is very important. Now, what do we need to cut? We're real lean right now. You know, we're real lean right now. So, you know, there may be a year that we, that we benefit from having some fund balance. You can't, you can't pay your bills out of the savings account for long. So that's something that you're gonna have to get into that communication mode, you're gonna have to start telling people, this is where we're at, what's most important? You know, what do we need, what do we need to look at? So, you know, I don't know that I can give you specifics, you know, and I'll, I'll answer any, any question, and I'll take forty-five minutes to do it if you want me to. But, but in stuff like that, until we get there, it's also almost impossible to tell you.
Yeah. The reason I ask that question is because it's always real easy to talk about positive things a lot, right? I promise you, as a part of, people in this year, the next year, you're gonna throw up, right? And so that's the tough thing, Simone. As a board member, you are going to have to be able to put up a people's shift on what you make a decision, right? And me personally, I think, let you guys, right? If you've got a dollar to spend, you can cut it out, not a dollar twenty, not a dollar ten, a dollar, right? In a small town, if we're not making twenty percent, and I'm making twenty percent out, that would be my guess, right? So if we have a six million dollar budget, right, and we have to operate on four point eight million dollars, and there's a million dollars in the fund balance, that carries you for one year. I may not be right about this, but don't we usually have to wait a year before we know what that cash number is? Is that normally right?
Wait, the biennium, we're gonna know stuff two years, because the state legislature meets every two years, and we operate off of that. So, you know, and I'll just, I'll just continue on and stop y'all from having to sit in the hot seat. But, you're right, you know, you can't live off of savings forever. And everybody knows, ninety percent of what is in our expenses is people.
It is.
And no one wants to lay off any of our great folks. Hard decisions require people to make hard decisions. I have no problem making hard decisions. And if running for school board for one year, because this election was supposed to be held in May, has taught me anything, it's, I can take whatever you guys throw at me. So, you know, if I make a decision that I think is right, I'm gonna tell you why I think it's right. And if you think it's wrong, and you tell me why, I may change my mind. If you make a good argument, I may change my mind. But when I think something's right, I'm gonna do it. I'm gonna tell you why, and we'll do it. And if you don't like it, if you're not like it, don't vote for me next time. Call my house, everybody in here should have my number. And, and... Yeah, everybody should know where I live.
I like how you put your spot, it is purposely a difficult question. Right, so just tell what you guys do, right?
No, I understand.
But I would like to actually get something specific that says, okay, if I had to cut dollars, right, just for a budget, right? Give us an idea of what your thinking is, or we can follow. Because you're probably not gonna wanna cut athletic.
I disagree there with you, okay? Because I had to do that. I was at a place where I had to do that, and the hardest thing is I had to lay off a couple, back when the crunch hit right there. I had to tell some, some coaches that because of their, their years of experience, they were the low end on the totem pole. I hated it, I'm like you, I'm agreeing with you a hundred percent. But I also knew that we had to cut the budgets, but we, you gotta buckle down, you gotta find other things to do. We fundraised a lot, you know, we, to make up that deficit, you know, with what's the resources we needed. You just gotta, it's tough, you know? But I've been in those situations before, and, you know, I'm not afraid, if you come up and start, you know, you're upset and everything, I'm like Alec, and I think Mike's same way, I'm gonna listen to you. I'm not a great, I'm not one of these smart guys on the budget deal, but I'm gonna listen to people, you know? But I've had other assets that I think I could help, like the athletic program, that we could maybe cut, knowing ways that we could help that. And I'll do everything I can, but the criticism, I've been putting up that for forty years, you know what I mean? I can't call a right play, you know?
Okay, so, what was the question? Yeah, what would I cut? So we know, and I'm gonna first start, and we talk about having great strengths in our community, like Kevin, you are in the oil business, and you're gonna see it before any of us. And that's information, I mean, I remember I got the property tax report a little bit early, and I called Mr. Martin Dell, and I was like, look, hey, we're gonna have a great year here. So having a community involved in our school board, or our school district, is an asset because everybody has a strength. So, let me tell you, twenty percent budget cuts are gonna come down, we've gotta do something. I had to do that at the city college station this year. Everybody knows that sales tax, uh, nosedive. We had nobody doing anything for three months. We had people sitting at home, not spending a dollar, and we had a gaming hole that we had to cover. I have experience in that, I do not like doing it. But what you're gonna have to do is you have to take your budget, and you have to look at it, not on a function level, you almost have to go through the line item detail, and you've gotta find the items, because like Alec said, ninety percent of our budget is salaries. I do not want to touch people. That is the last thing that should ever have to happen in the budget, because those are people. You have to go through and start finding things where you can, you can have improvements or efficiencies combining areas where people are doing duplicate functions. You know, if we have extra paper because we're coloring, and it's, you know, it's probably not true, but, you know, saving money on reams of paper that we might be able to not use, or something like that. You don't realize how much money that you can find when you just have your departments or, you know, school districts, it would be like their, their mathematics department or stuff like that, and say, hey, what can you do without maybe for one year? And when you aggregate that up together, it's a lot. And it protects the end of the people, and that's really, if you ask me what's important in budgeting or in our school district, if one, it's our teachers, and two, it's our education, and actually, they're both the same, the kids are the same, but I would never want to have to lay somebody off when I could do something else. Any follow-up, or?
I have a follow-up to that.
Same.
So I was at a school board meeting this year, and speaking on the budget and having to make some decisions, I was at a school board meeting where we provided raises to various individuals within our district for this upcoming year. Do y'all, and I believe I saw at least two of you there, I'm not sure on the third one, but at that school board meeting, if you were sitting in their hot seat, would you have provided those raises, knowing the prices we're going into? And I will say, I am in finance as well, I do budgeting and accounting as well in the governmental setting, and so, sitting in that meeting was a little bit difficult for me. So I'd like to know from y'all, and I'd like to start with you.
We'll start on your guess again.
Would you have voted for those raises, and do you think that was a wise decision?
Well, answering your question, everybody wants, you know, as a teacher and as a coach, you wanna see those raises, because of all the time and hours that they put in, you know? But no, I would not have, you know, I would have, because of what's coming down the pipe, I would be ultimately conservative and just, you know, that's where you have to communicate with the teachers and all that, and tell them, you know, the next opportunity, you've got to let them know that they're gonna get, they're gonna get rewarded for what they, what they gave up at that time.
And so, that's a great question, and I'm gonna lead into it. One of the great things about budgeting, and you know this too, is you should never look at one year at a time. You should always budget out three years, especially for us in the Texas Biennium legislation, where funding comes every two years, basically. So if you can have a play, or a plan and a budget in place, knowing that you have revenue for two years when we have one year, and we can make assumptions on year two and year three, and basically decrease our funding from the state by a certain percentage, and/or keeping our property tax revenues basically the same, and we can fund those, then yes, I would vote for it. If, and like I said, I am a information decision maker, I need to see it. If you showed me a three-year budget, and I have that, and you gotta understand, raises compound, because it's three percent this year, next year's another three percent on top of that three percent. If you can't, can't have that, you can't afford it. So that's why, for me, it's very important to have long-range budgeting, I'm not talking five, ten years out, nobody knows what's gonna happen, none of us knew that COVID was gonna hit when we were sitting in February, that we'd look like this. And again, budgets are estimates, fund balance is important, because you have to rely on it sometimes. So, and I hope that answered your question, so I need to see the information to make my decision.
All right, knowing the information that was presented to them, what monies were in fund balance, what was going to be coming into fund balance, knowing that, that, what was it, two years ago, teachers did not get their step raises because we didn't know what was gonna happen, yes, I would have voted for it. Now, am I going to commit to voting for one next year? I don't know, you know, I would have to go into that. But, you know, I know that, you know, House Bill Three, when it came through, a large percentage of the additional money that we were given, we were required to give in raises, okay? That was the law. We're going to give you this much money, and I believe it was seventy-five percent of the additional money was required to be in raises. So, you know, that kind of made up for, but, I mean, we also have to, when we look at our budgets, we have to combine all of the information, like Mike said, but we also have to remember that our teachers have been on the front lines of the ones giving up in the past couple of years. And we have to take care of them. Nobody that teaches in Iowa is rolling in the dough, you know? And it was a very modest increase that they got, it was simply step. Whereas, all the districts around were getting step plus.
What about the administrators, though? There was administrators who were getting provided raises in that, that's not required in some of those schools that's been here here.
Right. Administrators have a pay scale, and you're right, a lot of those were not, are not required. It was April or May... It was April or May when the two principals' contract came up, and we were doing Zoom meetings then, their contracts came up and the suggestion was to renew the contract and give them each a raise. Guys, that was the day oil traded negative for the first time. Talk about a bad idea. We didn't know if we were going to be able to give the teachers a pay raise later at all. I spoke at that meeting and I said, do not do this. They deserve it? Yes. And it was only like four thousand dollars between the two of them. Did they deserve it? Yeah. Did we know if we had it? No. We hadn't started the budget process yet, or not deep into the budget process. I could not conscious that we would give an administrator a raise in a year that we potentially could not give a teacher a raise. And later, when we, so thankfully the school board took that input and just renewed the contract. Now, the principals did get their raise later in the, you know, before the fiscal year started. I probably would not have given administration raises. Because throughout, when you look at some of the administration positions, we pay a little better on administration than we do on the teacher scale. And, you know, that's something that I would have looked at. And I probably would not have voted for those raises, but I would have voted for the teacher raises. That's what I thought you were asking about the administrators, you know, would I have voted for that? I'll vote for the teachers before I vote for the administrators, because if they are doing, they're in the trenches again. I've been there before, I know how hard they work and all that, so I would be entitled, like Alec said, to give a raise to the teachers, but also hold off on the administrators.
Just make a quick comment, and I've talked to Jason about this, and one thing we need to do is we need to align all our raises and pays at the same time. Examples of what happened in April, when contracts come up and we decide somebody's raised, and then you get down to deciding in August, teachers step raises and something different happens, and you can't do that, you know, they should be on the same scale. We do the same thing at the city, everybody's pay is decided at one point in time. It just makes sense as an organization to handle it that way. Okay, any more questions?
I have one.
Okay. When we get to about fifteen till, I'm going to give each of these guys an opportunity to kind of close.
So the question is, when did Ryan first, what position have a team of running? The spots that are open are individual spots. What are your thoughts on candidates campaigning as a candidate?
That's a great question. And I think it all comes to, you see three signs together, and three signs, you have challengers and incumbents, and that's kind of the nature of elections. And it all comes down to change, and I understand that, you know, some people like what they have and they don't want change, and they view, you know, me, Michael DeHaven as a challenger, kind of the same as Alec, challenging a position on people that are already on the school board. It should be based upon individual trustees, what they add to the school board. I add, and it's basically, your choice for my position is what I add in my strengths versus what Tammy adds in her strengths. And it comes down to that, and that's the choice. When you look on the ballot, there's not three items together. It is position number four, Tammy, and me, and you make your choice.
I totally agree right there. There's a lot of things that I feel like I present to the district, but then also these two guys, there's a lot of different things they present, but we're all our individual person. You know, I have different beliefs, and Eric's strong in some areas, I'm stronger in the educational part, they're strong in the budget, so I don't think it's a, I wouldn't, there was never a tension of a team, it was, I'm running against Luke, and that's who I have to, that's who I'm running against, and that's who I've got convinced to y'all. If he's the best choice, then vote for him, and if you think I can bring something to the district in Iowa, vote for me. Each of us have supporters across the community. And like Michael said, that you will often find all three of our signs in the same place and all three of the incumbents' signs, but if you drive up and down, you're going to find there are a lot of houses that mix, okay? And we're fine with that. And I walk around a lot, knock on doors and talk to people, and I would tell them, when I would invite them to this event, I had a little card, and it had our names on it, and I would say, these are the two others that I support. It's their job to make their case to you, but I want you to know I support them. And if somebody would ask me a question, I would answer it the way I would, but I'd say, I'm not answering for these guys. It's their job to make the case for them, to each of you. I talk way too much making my case. Can you imagine me standing at your door trying to make the other case? And by the way, I have discovered I am the world's worst politician. I talk to people for thirty minutes after they say they're going to vote for me. I've been invited to Germany. People invite me in their house, give me water, take a load off, so, I mean, I couldn't make the case for the rest of them, that's their job.
As an attorney, nobody ever invites me to anything. Okay, we're getting about fifteen till, what I'm going to do is I'm going to let each one of these guys make their closing pitch to you guys. I guess we'll go ahead and start with you. So again, basically, just to reiterate, why I'm running for school board is I strongly believe that the communities need to use the strength they have within the people there. And I'm giving that as a option for that trustee position for my strength in tax backs organizations. I'm fine if nobody wants to vote me in, because the pay for this job is horrible. And we all, all of us want to volunteer and do the best for the community, that's all we want, that's what the school district deserves. You know, and I've been in this town for twelve, ten years now. I love this place, it's amazing, my kid, two of my daughters grew up here, my son, he's been, he grew up in Houston, so he's a Los Angeles. He, no, he's a brickhead. I just want to make, I just want to offer what I have to Iowa to make it better. And key is, I want to keep Iowa, Iola, ISD. That is what brought us here. This school, the way Ms. does volleyball, I mean, that's what brought me here. The way the kids gather around FFA, that's what brought me here. I don't want any of these things that make Iowa to change. I want Iowa to look different in some offerings, I'd love to have some kids learn computer programming. When I was in high school in the nineteen eighties, I learned computer programming. I mean, look how long ago that was till now, we should be able to have that here with our school. And so, that's kind of really all I want to say.
In my campaign, I focused on three areas. The first is what I call a foundation plus education. Iowa has always been known as a strong foundation. But that's not enough. So we do have to add more on one side for college prep and upper-level classes, and we have to add eventually on the other side, the career app classes. Every kid that leaves Iowa has to be able to say they were prepared for whatever life was going to throw at them. Second is communication. We talked about the importance of communication earlier, and it, through my campaigning, I have met so many people, and it's just a wealth of knowledge and a wealth of ability, and the district simply does not take advantage of everything, everybody that has a Iowa address. There's so much more that we can offer our kids through those people. And then the third is the financial responsibility, and I think I've made the case there. So, that's what I want to say, although I do want to encourage everybody to vote. Early voting starts on Tuesday, and early voting will be at the courthouse, the BDI Civic Center, and you can go into the Navisota Center as well. And then on Election Day, there's new machines, so it'll take you a little while maybe, and our county now does voting so that you can go to any precinct that you want. If you normally vote Keith, you can come here, if you normally vote here, you can go to Keith. So keep all that in mind. Okay, I'll basically, I'm the last one to sum it up here. I basically, I'm running for school board basically to give something back to Iowa, the school district, the students, the community. You know, like I said, you go, vote for the person you feel like, if I haven't answered all your questions, and you still have some questions you'd like to ask me, I'll give you my cell number right now, it's eight one seven nine one five six two seven five, and my email address is coachcunningham58@yahoo.com. Like I said, I'm just trying to be a team player here, I'm trying to help. There's a lot of good things happening in Iowa at the school system. Is there a couple of things I think we could push better? Yes, I think we can, but overall, it's still a great school district. And then after this, I'll be glad when this lecture's over, when some of them guys who's not talking to me no more will start talking to me.
Do you have one more question?
One more question came in. Real quick, coming up in sixty seconds or less. If you're elected for the school board, will you be present and participate in meetings? And will you feel comfortable to ask questions or raise possible issues before you vote on?
Okay, so, being in a public organization already, I think it's my responsibility when I make decisions that, one, they're informed and I figure out what they need to be, and also, I do communicate to the public why I'm making that decision. You've seen this, see that in many public organizations, because a lot of people, if there's no communication, that's when it starts kind of, people kind of wonder. If you are overly communicating, nobody can wonder, because it's already there. What was the other part of that?
Will you feel comfortable to ask questions or raise possible issues before you vote?
Oh, I will ask questions. People know me, I like to ask questions.
You really do?
I think I've proven that I'm fine talking. No, I mean, in reality, if you've ever gone to one of the Iowa ISD school board meetings, as a school board member, they're useful. As a member of the public, they're not useful. Ninety percent of what happens is in the consent agenda, and then they present something, they vote on it, and they're done. And the way I think it should happen is there should be questions asked, even if I know the answer, because you may not. I will explain what I'm, if I'm voting yes or no, and why. But then if I lose, if I vote no and it passes, I'm going to do my hardest to make sure that it's successful, because it's now policy. Okay? So, and guys, you don't want a school board member that is going to agree on everything. If they agree on everything, why do you have a school board? If there's not discussion, all of the input and all of the experience from everybody that's on that board means nothing. All right, real quick, yes, I will be present, yes, I will listen, yes, I will explain, and yes, I will vote the way I feel, and nobody else can influence me, if I feel like it's the right way, and I will justify why I vote that way. I'm my own person, you know, that's just how I am. So, yes, I will listen, I will have questions, and then I'll vote the way I think is the best for this district.
I just want to say one thing before we finish. Again, I really appreciate you inviting me to moderate this. I, you know, I hear the people in the community come up here, hear the guys up here, you know, Iola, Iola, it's really refreshing. I grew up, basically, the majority of my life, I lived in Katy, Texas. And when I was in high school, we were one high school, we played Navisota in football. And so it was a small town, knew everybody, if you got in trouble, your parents knew it before you got home, it was just like this. So, but let me tell you, it's changed. In this last election, one of the sheriffs, who, God rest his soul, passed away, but he was running, in Waller County, was running for reelection, and he was down in Cane Island, I don't know if anybody knows where that is, but it's a huge subdivision that's in Katy now, over three thousand houses. And he was walking to campaign, and he walked up to some people, said, well, I'm the sheriff, and I would just love to have your vote. They were, well, why are you here? They didn't even realize they lived in Waller County, so, so it's, yeah, Katy's changed. And in fact, I probably need to go home and tell my wife, we need to go start looking at land in Iowa. But you need to take this video and put it on your Chamber of Commerce video, because it shows, this is why y'all probably will get more people moving this way, because what's going on in this country? You know, maybe you don't have to worry much about the budget, maybe you'll get people realizing, we need to get to the country, get to those morals and those values that we miss, so. I know, she's hung up her ex, don't come, definitely. And that's what happened to Katy, so. But again, just wanted to really say thank you for coming, obviously you care about your community, you know, you guys are here, and y'all are even out on Facebook, and that's incredible, that's really, really kind of a cool thing.
I just wanted to tell everybody, thank y'all for coming, thank you for being adults. I believe that we all can be adults, we just need to ask questions, we need to ask our school board questions, we need to question our superintendent. Working at a school district myself, I know that the superintendent's boss is the school board. So they are required, and they have every right to ask questions and do what they're supposed to do. In our little tiny community, I have seen it divided, I hate it, I've only been here ten years, but in the last five or so years, I have seen it start to get divided, and I don't want to see that. I have two girls still here, and we're not leaving anywhere, it's going where anytime soon. I'm a copion, so, you know, we've been here, we've been here with the copions. So, but thank y'all again so much for coming and asking y'all some questions, I really appreciate it.